Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the God who has made us here. To the people of our country, to the citizens, to the people who live in justice.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for all our service men and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Joseph McDonald and Ambry McAuliffe. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. Snorl.
Here.
Third Order 3A, minutes of the Scranton Parking Authority, regular meeting held September 25th, 2024. 3B, Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority, September 2024, meeting, minutes received October 10th, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, receive them filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Just, I'd like to thank all the volunteers who helped with the Steamtown Marathon this past weekend. It was a big success. We had 1,100 registered. We had 904 finishers. They came from 38 states and a total of nine countries. We had a tremendous amount of help. It was a rainy day, but policemen, firemen, citizen volunteers, EMS workers, up and down the valley through 14 communities welcomed these runners from all over the country. And I think we put a great show on. A lot of people ran great times. A lot of people qualified for the Boston Marathon and it was very successful. So I want to thank the entire Steamtown Marathon Committee who helped volunteer for the past 27 years, making it a big success. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else?
I had one announcement. Next week, 10/24, so October 24th at 6:00 PM, they're going to have a meeting on the Kaiser Valley Stormwater. It's going to be at 6:00 PM. So I'll make another announcement next week to give a reminder, but Kaiser Valley Stormwater.
Thank you.
Okay, so next week's public caucus, Tuesday, October 22nd at 5:45, we will have Fitch and Associates and members of the city's administration for discussion and to answer questions from council regarding the emergency medical services feasibility study within the city of Scranton. Also, the Catherine McAuley Center will take Halloween costumes, new or gently used. Donations can be dropped off at the administration offices Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, on 530 Pittston Avenue. I know everybody has some costumes laying around in their attic. I know I do, so they really need them. And then the Victor L. Fury Club will be doing a dine-in or take-out over in West Side. All are welcome. Bring a friend, feed a friend. They're doing this one week early. It's going to be Thursday, October 24th, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. It's on Main Avenue. And they're having polenta or pasta and meatballs or half and half. Price is $12 for members, 14 for non-members. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew.
I had another one to add. We received information on this trunk-or-treat event. I know there's a lot this time around, but I figured I'd mention this one. I'm not sure if anyone had already, but the Elm Park Methodist Church that's on Linden Street down near the University of Scranton, they're going to be having a trunk-or-treat. That's Saturday, October 26th, from 1:00 to 3:00, and the rain date is the following day. So you'll be able to fill your bags with goodies, or the kids will. They'll have entertainment, building tours. So that should be a fun family event. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourth Order, citizen participation.
Joan Hodogwannis?
Joan Hodogwannis, Scranton. I want to start by complimenting DPW and the Police Department for the fine work they did supporting the Steamtown Marathon, which they do every year. I was the race director for the Army's Mule Mountain Marathon at Fort Wachukah for the two years I was as a battalion commander. And I know exactly how much work goes into the planning and execution of an event like that. All you see is what happens on race day, but it's a year-long effort, and it takes the cooperation of a lot of people. And the nice thing is, you know, it reflects so well on the city and the residents and the police and DPW and other people. Even though the weather was kind of lousy in the morning, you know, the volunteers were just very up, you know, the runners were happy. It was just a very successful event. And so I congratulate you, Mr. King, and everyone who supported you in that. I saw on the news that there were something like 2,000 volunteers to execute. I know what that's like. You know, of course, I had, I had people didn't have to volunteer. I had soldiers. A little different than when I did it, but anyway, it was a great event. The collective bargaining agreement, so we're still waiting on the police contract, correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I just wanted to be sure I didn't miss it somewhere on the website, you know?
No, no. The only thing that was updated were all the arbitration awards. So it's still the old contract with all the arbitration awards.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'll be watching for it. And we're still negotiating the DPW contract because that ends at the end of this year.
Yes.
So hopefully that'll, I hope that that's completed before that contract runs out. They did it the last time. Maybe they can pull that off again. And keep in mind, you know, that even though it might not be completed, that as you do the 2025 budget, eventually any pay raises will hit that budget. So if it's, it may be just like with police and firefighters, you know, you have to backdate it to, you know, the first of the year. That's why it's so important that these things be done on a more timely basis because it's to no one's advantage to be going back a year or two. Let's see. When Vice President Harris or former President Trump, when they come to town where they're vice presidential candidates, who picks up the tab for the security and other arrangements? Do we get paid later, or do we just suck it up?
City of Scranton bills all of the candidates. Every candidate gets billed.
Do they honor the bills? Do they pay?
I don't, I don't know of any that have paid.
Because it can't be cheap.
I know the smaller ones like bills raising, they all pay.
Yeah, well, it can't be cheap, is what I'm saying, especially, you know, in this contentious election year, and it's a heightened threat environment. And I, you know, I don't object to the fact that, you know, we go that extra mile, but it's got to cost some money. There's got to be a lot of overtime and other issues. And I hope we get down the road reimbursed for the costs because they seem to be coming back and back and back and back and, you know.
Yes, I know, we do bill them.
To my mind, once is enough, you know? Don't come back, kind of thing. So what's the status of the city's audit? We still waiting on the Scranton Parking Authority?
Parking Authority, yes, yes. I don't know, well, because the city always closed yesterday, so I...
Does anybody have any idea when their next, the Parking Authority's next scheduled meeting is? Go down there and rattle a few doors?
Yeah. We just, their last one was September 25th.
So they do a quarterly?
I believe, it must be quarterly, yeah.
Okay. But they're not getting a Christmas card this year because they're the one bottleneck holding it up.
Yes.
They know better. This is not the first time they were late. So I don't know what their game is, but hopefully when, when new members have to be appointed, we get some more cooperative people appointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Ron Elman?
Yes, counsel. Believe it or not, lately, I've been listening instead of talking. What I hear isn't the best, of course. One parent complained. Her son, you know, this is sort of surprising to me. Her son is voting Democratic because he believes that Democrats stand for socialism, drugs, and abortions. This, this seems to be an underlying reason when you talk to some younger people. That's bad. There's no thinking of 10 or 20 years from now, even in the ads you see for different people. I don't know why abortion's such an issue, anyway. I believe it's to get so many people's minds off of all the adversities happening in this country to, at this present time. I think, I think a lot of people just fear the truth, the facts, and don't want to hear bad news. I'll give you a fact here. From 1973 to 2021, there were 625,000 legal abortions. Now, does that sound like we need Planned Parenthood? They're out there with, if somebody needs one, they're available, evidently. You can look on your computer and see the only people that really need Planned Parenthood seem to all the pregnant bimbos that want to use abortion for birth control at taxpayers' expense. I'll give you another fact. Look up Harris's miraculous overnight rise in California politics under her mentor Willie Brown. She had no history. She had no record whatsoever that she's telling people, the commercials that she did. This is during her administration, not before it. You know, I heard yesterday, she was complaining about Mr. Trump's mental state. She stood next to the president for four years and never had any mention of his health problems. I'd like to see what Harris would do in a debate with Janet Evans, Mrs. Cummings, Mrs. Walsh, Fanucci, Ms. Gattelli, Jessica up there, Joan and Marie. I think she'd fail miserably. I can't imagine anyone being so naive and so ignorant that they believe the powers behind the presidency are going to allow this woman to have any authority if they win. And lastly, about Walsh. A good officer leads his men. A sniffling coward, knowing his command is being activated and going to war, would drop out a month or two, as he did, before they leave. I'm a veteran, and I think I can comment on this miserable, wretched, obnoxious action of his. He is definitely a coward. And how could, how could you expect someone like that to lead troops if, if something happened to Harris? Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Bolis?
Evening, counsel. Bob Bolis, Scranton. You know, as, Mark, thank you for the donations. What we're doing is, we're going to continue with through this week and to the end of next week, and then I'm done with it. I've already shipped five trailer loads of donated foods and stuff that we've donated, disinfectant wipes that I donated with my fellow Masons and other people that's gone down to Florida and North Carolina. So if we can't fill this trailer out, we'll take whatever we have that's been donated to us and give it to another group, and they could take care of it. The other thing that he brought up about abortions, I don't think that should be an issue in this country over who gets elected to office. Abortion is a personal thing. If somebody wants to murder a baby, there should be a law against it. It's no different than somebody pointing a gun to somebody's head and raping them and murdering them. So it may be a choice. If it depends on the mother's life, incest, or other things that are there that are pertinent, it may be acceptable, but not just as a form of birth control, that we start murdering babies. It's got to come to an end, and that can't be the issue of this campaign. This campaign's got to be about all Americans, our safety, closing borders, and doing the things that are necessary, getting us back on track that Joe Biden and Harris took us off. The gas wells, the drilling, all the other stuff that's gone down, the high cost of living and everything that we're facing. What bothered me this time is President Trump came to Scranton, and I want to mention our police department and the state police. They did one hell of a job protecting not only the president, but everybody that attended his rally here in Scranton. But what disturbed me most is none of our local officials, county commissioners, Gahan, McGoyne, nobody went to greet him. I thought when you became a public official, that it was your job to represent all the people, whether it was against their political affiliation you didn't like, didn't make a difference. Everybody became neutral. And I'm offended by the fact that we didn't greet him. Yet when Sleepy Joe came to Scranton, everybody went crazy. Yet he turned in to be a coward and walked away and let his party destroy him. And he turned around and let Harris, the phony liar, get in his tampon tim to run. Yet people run out and greet them. Why don't we greet Trump? What are we going to do if he does become president? We're going to ignore him then? But everybody will want something done. Look what he's talking about, the Biden administration, the people in Florida. And I'm down in Florida. I have interest in Florida, and we've been hit by the hurricane down there on Annemarie Island and all, so they're not doing a damn thing for the people down there that have been devastated through the Carolinas and all. That's what our government should do. And Joe doesn't even know where North Carolina is, let alone what they're going to do about getting things done. And it's a disappointment. The other thing I think people should understand is that Trump donated his salary. He didn't take it, he donated it. He did a lot for this country, and we don't have that right now. People say, why are you wearing that shirt, Bolis? Because I believe Donald Trump is alive today, not because of Secret Service or any of the police that were around there. I believe it was divine intervention, and I believe Jesus Christ was involved in it because he wanted somebody to be around here to straighten this country out where it's going. The other thing that we have here, and I'm looking at 7A. You know what the cost to buy a garbage truck? And we're going to rent it out. Who's going to drive it? Who's going to repair it? And who's going to insure it? And how much money are we going to make on our investment in that garbage truck? The cost of fueling and everything else? I didn't see any of that. I'm a former Freightliner, Brockway, Marmont, and Volvo dealer, and I've had over 600 trucks. I know what the cost of operation is, but I don't see any of this. And yet we're giving them a $140,000, $150,000 garbage truck. During Lafayette, the city let the truck sit there day and night, never shut it off, kept idling, idling, burning fuel. For what purpose? To block the Trump trailer. And that's the problem we have. We're not here using our head and taking care of our assets. And last of all, I just want to thank you guys for being the council members that you are, that you respect. You don't stop anybody from free speech, and you're to be commended for it. But next time President Trump comes to town, say hello. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Lucas?
Evening, counsel. Alan Lucas, Scranton resident, president of the IFF Local 60, representing the Scranton firefighters. I'm here today to address the introduction of the study regarding the future of Scranton Fire Department Station Engine 10. Engine 10 is currently located at the top of East Mountain, where it was built in the 1960s. This placement is intentional. Fire stations throughout the city are strategically located to ensure the fastest possible response times. Engine 10 serves as the first due engine for East Mountain, Upper South Side, Dutch Hollow, meaning it's the first apparatus to arrive unseen in these areas. Additionally, Engine 10 is second due to the hill section, providing critical water supply and support for emergencies. East Mountain is also home to Mountain Lake and Lake Scranton, both of which have had multiple water emergencies and water rescues performed by the fire department. The closure of Engine 15 in the city's hill section has increased Engine 10's workload, making a continued operation even more essential. As we often say in the fire service, seconds matter during an emergency. Delays in response time can mean the difference between containing a fire and experiencing a catastrophic loss. We've already seen the impact, impact when Engine 10 was out of service. The last time the station was temporarily closed, a fire broke out on Fraude Street on East Mountain. Without Engine 10 available, Engine 2 stationed 2.9 miles away had to respond. What should have been a four-minute arrival time turned into a 10-minute or longer response. As a result, what could have been a fire contained to the garage spread to the house, causing significant damage. Recognizing the importance of Engine 10, the city reopened the station that very next day. The threat of fire on East Mountain extends beyond the residents to local businesses as well. Waldorf Park, housed in a 100-year-old building, stands today thanks to the quick response of firefighters stationed on the mountain. According to Waldorf Park President Harold Bauer, we had a small kitchen fire here where our kitchen burned. If it was not for the fire truck up here on East Mountain getting here so quickly, the whole building would have been lost, but they were able to get it knocked down fast. In addition to its strategic location, geography plays a crucial role in response times. East Mountain's steep terrain, particularly during inclement weather, can delay response times if resources, resources aren't stationed nearby. While it may be slower to travel downhill, we know that we can always make it down. That is not always the case going up, especially when time's of the essence. Keeping Engine 10 on East Mountain ensures our firefighters can respond safely and efficiently to emergencies, no matter what the weather conditions. Beyond response time challenges, the current Engine 10 station is outdated and inadequate for both operational and living purposes. The building lacks the space necessary to meet the needs of modern firefighting. Over time, the equipment we carry has increased, but the station has not kept up pace. With more gear, tools, and personnel, the cramped quarters present challenges for firefighters living and working there. Engine 10 also often receives an older, hand-me-down apparatus from other stations, further emphasizing the need for a properly equipped and functional station to support operations. So on behalf of Local 60, I respectfully urge that any study or decision regarding Engine 10 fully considers the vital role it plays at its current location, not just for the residents and businesses of East Mountain, but for the entire city. To ensure public safety and the safety of our firefighters, Engine 10 must remain at or near its current location. I thank you for your time and consideration, and I especially thank the members of council that took the time out of your schedules to meet with us outside of these, these grounds and hear our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. That's all for our signing sheet. Anyone else wish to address counsel?
Tom Coyne, Menucha. I completely agree with the fire station being where it is. It was there for a reason. I'm well aware of being back in Menucha and coming up even Pittston Avenue or the Cedar Avenue Hill back in the 60s or 70s and hoping to get up to the top when it's covered with snow and ice, and sliding to the side a little bit and bumping off the curbs just so you didn't go all the way back down to the bottom of the hill or into people behind you. Having a fire, having a fire station in a high ground in a place to respond quickly is imperative, especially as you mentioned, in inclement weather. I look at the, the document here, 5B, and the only thing I find confusing about it is, I have no problem with the grants, and I believe for the design and the placement of it, the fire department should be the primary consulting for where its operation should be, since it's the one who has to go out and actually take care of fires and store the equipment, not people in offices or City Hall or consultants. I look at this, and it says they want to do a pre-design, and then following the pre-design, a design. So they need a study to study a design to then get a design based upon what they pre-designed. And then after that, rather than having the contractor who made the design responsible for actually performing and doing a competent job, it seems we need a construction oversight position to oversight the con, oversee the, oversight the construction that they're already contracted to do. It seems like there's a lot of extra layers of digging in and giving money to people that aren't directly into the process of actually building or constructing this. So multiple layers, I do have a concern with. It seems to be a bit abusive. Mr. Voldenberg, I'd like to thank you for providing a copy of the Home Rule Charter. I got a chance to look over it, and it was a good way of clearing up some information, including some information that I was incorrect about. The charter provides for only a few positions that are required for city residents. Those are the mayor, city council, and city controller, all have to be residents of the city for at least one year beforehand and have continuous city residency. Those are the only specific ones by the charter. Other laws may have been passed by ordinance that have increased that one in the past, but those restrictions from the charter were not originally there. Recyclables. We're now up to $15,941 that we've thrown away by sending recyclables to recycling center and then having them move over to the dumps for $120 a ton versus $47. So it's a do-nothing loss of 15, almost $16,000 now, and it will continue to add up for as long as we do nothing and say, we'll wait for someone to make a decision. Tenaples originally had a, it was $0 until COVID struck, and he couldn't get the free, the $1 free labor from the prisons, which he's getting sued for because the $1 that the county set up for him is illegal because you're only allowed to pay the $1 fee if they're working for Unicor and on prison property. They should have been getting a minimum wage. So it moved from $1 to $40 for the recycling because he could no longer pay prisoners $1, $1 an hour for the process. $1 an hour for the process. Now it's probably moved up to $120 because he's going to have to pay the back pay on all of those civil suits. So we're now jumping up to $120, not only because he's not making as much, but he's going to have to pay the piper in the end. That's pretty much all I have to say tonight because there's a lot of problems in the city that could be resolved if people actually stepped forward and moved the process rather than someone else waiting to move the ball. Seems to be a lot of resistance. And unfortunately, as citizens, we have very little control over that, except for our voice. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Virgil Argenta. Hope you pay attention to Mr. Lucas, who's a professional, who knows best about fire service but a firefighter. And let's not forget that the double nickel also protects. There's a nursing home up on the mountain and the Howard Gardner School. So now, why are projects put out to bid in the city of Scranton when you do not take the lowest bidder? Is the city of Scranton so financially well-off that the city administration does not take the lowest bidder, even when it's close to $600,000 lower? For instance, the Capousa Avenue splash pad project. This project was bid out by a local licensed city contractor with experience in splash pad construction. For the record, the first bid, the low bidder was under $2 million. It was submitted by a local, longtime, experienced, licensed city of Scranton contractor with experience in splash pad construction. The company that the city is trying to accept to do the work is from outside the city of Scranton, and their bid was 2.3 million plus, which is at least $600,000 more than the lowest bidder. Are we that well off in the city of Scranton? Does anybody know? The bid was not accepted, and it was thrown out, and it was put up for a rebid. Six other contractors were part of the rebid process. Once again, the local licensed city of Scranton contractor was once again the low bidder. To our surprise, the city of Scranton awarded the bid to the highest bidder from outside the city. Does that surprise anybody? So can anyone explain to us why a bid for $600,000 plus more would be accepted? And for the record, what are the rules of engagement for bidding out projects in the city of Scranton? Or wait a minute, do we just make them as we go along? This is the third bid that we are aware of where something is not ending up with the bidding process for the city of Scranton. Let that be for the record. We have an awful lot of lawsuits filed by contractors against the city of Scranton and who made an awful lot of money. Do we need another injunction filed on another project? Can we afford another lawsuit? Can we afford a delay, another project pertaining to the activities for our youth? Regarding the Novembreno splash pad issue where the rubber matting is lifting, the splash pad contractor, just so you guys are all aware, did not do that. A city vendor did it. The contractor also advised the city, and I'm sure it's in writing, not to put the matting down for a year so that the concrete would have a chance to cure. Mr. Smurl, I'm sure you're aware of concrete and curing, but the mayor insisted to rush the job so that the splash pad could be used, and she would look good. We can all bet that the mayor failed to mention the fact to wait one year before the rubber coating went down. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher, resident of East Mountain, very close to the firehouse. Can anybody tell me how much revenue we are going to get from Sorento Building this year?
I don't believe there's any revenue at all.
Pardon?
Zero. I don't think there's any at all.
Okay, well, then let's certainly make sure for next year that there is, because the mayor, when she wanted to buy the Sorento, said that it would provide revenue. And if it doesn't, we should put it on the market. Now, pilots, we talk about the local ones, but there is a Chapter 69 of Title 31 of the United States Code where the law recognizes the financial impact of the inability of local governments to... Yeah, my writing. Yeah, to call the property taxes on federally owned land. So why are we not doing that? Why are we not asking the Department of the Interior to provide pilot?
I don't know.
Chamberlain, at least I think that's a sizable chunk of land. And then, again, with Engine 10, there's another thing that's there. There's a lot of population on that East Mountain, and there's four ways to get there. And that's it. So that really makes a big difference. You either come up River Street, or you go in Seymour, or I forget the name of the other one down there.
Linwood, I think.
Pardon?
Linwood.
Yeah.
Yeah, behind the nursing home. That's Linwood. And there's Seymour and Snook.
Yeah. Whatever happened to Wawa?
I don't know why it stalled or where it's at right now.
When we give a variance to somebody, is there a certain length of time that is usable?
Well, I don't know what the zoning gave or if they did approve the whole project. I'm not sure of all of that.
Yeah, well, it was like supposed to be, according to them, I think it was two years ago, last August, or this August, '94, yeah, '24. And again, I guess I'll have to ask that whenever we do the budget this year, we take into consideration what the county did today, which was to increase the taxes by 33%. And we can only take so much. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Good evening, council. Lee Morgan. The first thing I have here is, you know, I think that the Engine 10 debate should end and that that station should be maintained no matter what happens here because of the public safety issue and just how important it is. And I don't think there's much more to be said on that because taxpayers pay taxes for a reason, and it's to have their interests protected. And I don't know if you can see that, but I just want to add something because I agree with what everybody said here about the engine company. But the other thing I have here is, you know, there's a big, well, maybe it's not a big debate, but there's a discussion going on in the community to some degree about the county commissioners meeting and Mr. Ballis. But, you know, when you watch the tape that ECTV has put together, I'm just curious as to why they'd edit the meeting to remove certain parts of it in regards to the events that took place at that meeting. Now, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself, but, I mean, I do have ECTV in federal court because of the way they conduct their business. I believe the mayor and the council are responsible for that. As a matter of fact, ECTV tried to question whether they should be in federal courts, and then I decided, well, maybe I should take them to county court too, since we're going to have a party. We might as well let everybody come to the party, including the county judges, because evidently that case is locked tight, and I really look forward to discovery and bringing witnesses in. I intend to bring the five council members there and the mayor and former council members, and I've asked your clerk for information on formation of that channel. I hope he took me very serious. I just think the residents of the city have to realize one thing. They've allowed city government to play politics. Other speaker got up and spoke about why people didn't come to see Mr. Trump. Well, this has been a town of political Democrats for almost forever, and they've looted this city continually over my entire lifetime. And they really have ignored worthy projects to pass more graft on to anybody they could. So when they question what's going on at the Splash Park at Novembreno and the contracts that come through here and all the grant money, it's just one form of graft after another. And there's no desire on the part of the council to investigate anything, because you remember what happened at the inspections Department. The lady that made the accusations moved outside the city and took her family with her because of how corrupt this government is. But yet, still, the residents keep voting for it because, well, you know, you just can't fix stupid. They just don't understand because they've been led uneducated and have no desire to see the truth. And on the abortion issue, it's not even a federal issue. It's a state issue, but it's the only issue that the Democrats have to bring people to the polls because they're a complete failure. And the Republican Party, it was taken over by ordinary working people like myself. As you can see with the Teamsters going with the voting, the rank-and-file is going to vote for Trump, but the top guy won't endorse. And then other unions where the rank-and-file is Trump supporters, and the leadership of the unions going with the Democrats, it's graft, it's corruption, and the American people can't take anymore, even in organized labor. And when you look at abortion, I think people need to look at studies and history because almost nobody lived into adolescence and out of the other side of it before, about 1800. Almost all the children died before they were 16 years old. That's why two people had families of eight and 10 people. And when you look at women, you have to ask them one question. You can't stop being intimate with someone for a couple of days while you're ovulating. So the only answer you have is to kill your children? And I don't know how anybody, well, anybody can kill their own children. And, you know, abortion is nothing more than killing your children. And anybody who sees it any other way, I respect your opinion, but it's not factual. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I'm going to start by speaking about Engine 10 up on East Mountain. I remember that fire up at Waldorf Park Social Club and the quick response by Engine 10. In a matter of three minutes, they were actually inside the building, working on getting it put out. It's an older building, and it really would have went up quickly if Engine 10 wasn't there. We never also should have closed Engine 15. Response times for our older buildings and older structures are extremely important. Safety to the city is extremely important. Crosswalks to the city are extremely important. Where people use stop signs as yields, they don't come to a complete stop. Imagine if there was a crosswalk there, somebody not from the area, it would actually slow them down quite a bit. You know, we have crosswalks in our school zones. We don't have 15 mile-an-hour signs in our school zones. We don't have crosswalks for people on Sundays and Saturdays that go to church. You know, we don't have them at funeral homes. We don't have them at major thoroughfares. You know, safety is extremely important. Over the weekend, we had quite a few police calls, heart-wrenching, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then again today. There was a minor that was stabbed over by Wendy's earlier today. Thank goodness the perpetrator is in custody, but that doesn't stop what happened. You know, it's easy to say that they're isolated incidents, but they're also incidents because they affect everybody here in Scranton. People that are from here, people that truly care, people that want to make a difference. You know, we've heard from quite a few people tonight, quite a few subjects. The matter is, is they take time out of their schedule, they come up here and they speak their mind, and I am very respectful for that. There's not as many people as there should be to come out and speak their mind at local affairs like this one. I think that this coming election, next November, for our local officials is extremely important because the decision-maker makes a difference. And when you have those below this administration that are not from here, that can't make informative decisions based upon experiences in life, living in Scranton, growing up in Scranton, knowing what Scranton's about and its people, you just set yourself up for failure. We've done that once again by promoting the Parks Director to DPW. You know, Scott Gassenmeyer is not the answer. If you have one pool and you're over budget at the end of September, there's a problem. You're giving him more money to work with, more people to work with, and it's not a solution. It becomes an additional problem. We could do better. You know, I spend a lot of time on the weekends trying to help others because that's what I'm good at, the kindness of my heart, the being humbled by everybody you speak with, the people you get to know over the years. So I spend some time at the Washburn Street Cemetery. I know a lot of families that have loved ones that are in that cemetery. Unfortunately, the mayor only knows one family that's been impacted. And when you're not from here, this is what you get. You know, we could do better. We can make Scranton great again. We can make a difference. I truly believe that in life, there are things that you can change and things that you could try to change and things that you cannot change. You know, at one time, Scranton was a wonderful city. Our current climate, these calls, the poor decision-making and wanting to spend $350,000 on a study. Ask Alan Lucas and those from the Scranton Fire Department. They're the ones that know what they need. And come Election Day next year, I think the city of Scranton knows what they need, a change. Good evening, council.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just, I know we're going to consider that study tonight for East Mountain, and I'm pretty sure that all five of us are interested in seeing the Engine 10 stay on East Mountain. We're going to probably pass a resolution or introduce a resolution this evening that authorizes a study and some pre-design and design and construction oversight for a new Engine 10. I'm hoping that all of us will... I'm hoping that all of us will at least introduce it tonight and make an amendment to ensure that there's language put into it before it goes to Sixth Order next week that indicates that any construction of a new firehouse for Engine or replacement for Engine 10 happens either in the existing spot or in close proximity to where it is now. Lessons learned from the past. There's a reason why that was placed there. As was pointed out earlier, a very tragic fire occurred when that Engine 10 was closed down for 18 months, and all of a sudden, it was opened back up again. So I'm going to be supporting that this evening. And I believe the Fire Department supports the actual study for the design because we need that in order to ensure that, you know, it's not like the old days. There are so many new requirements for new fire departments and fire stations that studies like this are required, and we would be using an LSA grant to support that study, so I'm all for that. Something was mentioned earlier this evening that President Biden doesn't know where the Carolinas are. Well, he apparently did on October 2nd when he went to visit the Carolinas, and he met with the North Carolina Governor Roy Cooper, and he told Governor Cooper that the federal government would cover 100% of all debris removal and emergency protective measure costs for six months. So I just wanted to correct the record when things are said that aren't correct. I think it's important that facts come out, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few comments. So while we're on Engine 10, thank you for Mr. Lucas coming in, giving us a rundown of history, the needs in that area and why the station is in that location. I did have a chance to see the station. I've seen it in the past as well. From looking at the area, it seems like a new, modern fire station that meets our needs can be erected in that same location, if not nearby. So as Mr. King said, we will be moving this from Fifth Order, but prepare for some amendments to that to make that language work for the East Mountain community. One address I had, Mr. Voldenberg, I also spoke about it in caucus, was 519 Dickens Street. We followed up on it a few times. One of the residents had a concern about a basin there. We did get some emails that someone would go out. I did notice that a one call at least was made and the area was painted, but if we could just follow up as to timeline of events that'll occur there.
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you very much. I had some questions over the last two meetings, inquiring into some of the refuse trucks. We did lease two refuse trucks from '21 to '22, and while we were purchasing our new refuse trucks, so I just wanted to make sure that we weren't currently leasing any trucks for our fleet. That ended in May of 2023. I inquired about a gateway sign that's going to be located on Main, North Main Avenue near Euclid Avenue, as to whether that was going to be placed for the Tri-Park community or West Scranton, and that's going to be a marker for the West Scranton community. Okay. All right. While we're on refuse trucks, Mr. King asked the administration to confirm 30 days for borrow of the city refuse truck. He inquired if the city may confirm that the Scranton School District has named the city additionally insured on the insurance policy for that allotted timeframe. So the original term of the contract is through September 30th with an option to extend for an additional six months. Scranton School District is required to maintain adequate casualty, public liability, and property insurance coverage for the duration of the lease at their own expense. So they are picking up that expense on the refuse truck that they will borrow. Thanks. Next up, I had some questions about recycling, so I asked if there was an updated meeting that had occurred with the recycling program, and the city administration said that they had met with a representative of Lackawanna County Recycling Center. They explained that the issues with the contaminated, commingled recycling material received from county municipalities was also received from county municipalities, including Scranton. The issues are not a new problem, but the Recycling Center Incorporated decided in August to raise that rate to $120 a ton, as we've been informed, to dispose of that contaminated material. The Recycling Center considers contaminated material non-recyclable and charges an increased fee. So they're saying that they met with the representative. As the city weighs options, we are increasing the education to decrease the contaminated materials, so we'll see some recycling education coming out soon, I would imagine, and solicitor bids occurred in 2020, and they're reaching that cost of $120 per ton that's being currently charged. They stated that paper and cardboard recycling is not affected by the changes, but it just seems that they're continuing somewhat of a discussion on that issue. That's all for right now.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. So I didn't think I had a lot tonight, but I do have one thing that I'll mention after I'm done with a few of these responses. So first off, received a response on property I asked about, I think, the last couple of weeks for 231-233 Harrison Avenue. So I was, I did receive a report from code enforcement on some of the things that have taken place with that property in the past, and so, I mean, it was condemned, there was a condemnation release request, and that was in 2022, and then some other code enforcement, I don't know if these were quality of life tickets or what they were issued for, but this was in 2023, so last year, and then a building permit that was stopped in 2023 in March of last year. So I'm not sure what, why there's been nothing occurring at this point, but they are going to be having an inspector to revisit the property. So it's properties like this that do get kind of lost in the mix and left behind, and then we don't know what's happening with them. So, you know, if anyone has others like that to bring to us, then we're always happy to see what's going on with them and try to get them back on the priority list so that they can, that they can get fixed or properly dealt with. And then I was a little unclear on what I had received. Mr. Voldenberg, I don't know if you could provide clarity about the curb cuts that I had asked about. I know they said that they were going to assign it to Scott and that there were some concerns that were listed, but I didn't see those.
That's correct, Dr. Rothschild. They assigned that to the DPW director to review, so it was escalated.
Okay.
I'll get a status for you.
Okay. Hopefully, we'll be within a response of that shortly because I know we've been asked about it for quite some time now, so I want to make sure that we finally do get some answers on when those curb cuts could be addressed. And I also wanted to request, I don't think we've received any updates recently on the study that was taking place on the nonprofits in the city and their status and, you know, if we're able to get taxes from those organizations. Could we get an update on that?
I'll get that from the business administrator tomorrow.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And one last thing I wanted to address, and it's something that's been brought up in chambers before, and I take particular offense to it, and that's the comments about those who are not from here, because I'm not from here, and I did come here for school and stayed here, and I've been ever since. I am very proud of Scranton and to live in Scranton, and I consider myself a Scrantonian, even if I was not born here. And I am committed to the city. I'm raising my family here, and I care just as much about every Scrantonian as you all do here who are tonight, who might be from here. And I'm always willing to put in the work to finding out more about our history because I feel like that does help me to make informed decisions, just like with Engine 10 on East Mountain. I'm all for keeping that up there on the mountain. I'm in agreement with my colleagues on that. So, you know, if there's something, even if I haven't experienced it because I, you know, wasn't born and raised here and came here at a college age, I'm still always open to learning and finding out more and, you know, allowing that to help with my decision making. So, you know, just wanted to mention that it's, you know, I think it's really offensive that you're saying that people who aren't from here can't lead in the city or can't work for the city or can't run city departments and still do a good job, because I certainly feel like we can and like I'm doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McCandrick, do you have any motions or comments?
A few comments. I'll start with Engine 10. So, you know, we got legislation to do a study a year ago, and collectively, we voted it down up here because the wording and the language in the legislation that came down leaned towards taking it off the mountain and putting it at Chicks or whatever. It doesn't matter wherever. So, of course, I'm in agreement with my colleagues. I'm in agreement with the public that has come here and informed us. I took a ride up that mountain, and it's not my first time taking a ride up there, to see Engine 10, and I drive a Subaru, pretty much gets me anywhere. But on the way up, I'm thinking, how the hell? Or how, with all the bends in the road, I couldn't imagine driving a truck full of water up that mountain to put out a fire and safely get there with, you know, the required response time. There's a firehouse up there, all right? And there's a surge, and not only did I talk to some people up there, I talked to, and also throughout the city, but I talked to some residents, and there's a surge happening right now as we speak. There's petitions being signed to keep it on the mountain. And the more the merrier. The more people that come, and thank you, Mr. Lucas, you know, for your constant support up there and providing us with maybe some of the background knowledge that we don't have. I mean, we have some, but, I mean, and I'm not always a guy to quick vote for studies or consultants. I'm not. But for this case, I mean, this place was built in the 60s, right? So I get that we need a study, you know, to make sure we're in compliance. I also think that your national organization maybe could help us out with that. They're the experts, too. They can weigh in on it. I mean, and the study equates to money, so I agree with that. But the language was, and this is known by the administration that we don't, you know, we want to keep it on the mountain, but the language we got and the legislation sent down, it's a little vague again. We're going to introduce it, but we, you know, and we're going to amend it. So that will require some work from our solicitor, get the wording right. We got to get it right so it stays on the mountain. I mean, the wording, it says now, you know, we'll take a look at it and see what's best for the community. Well, it should be specific. What community are we speaking of? It should be East Mountain specific, the language in this. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't like the way it reads now. We're going to introduce it because we'll keep it moving, but we have to tighten up the language. You know, it has to be East Mountain specific or resident, East Mountain resident specific or both, so it stays there. And that's all I have on that, and I applaud the people on the mountain that are coming out in full force now. I've heard it, and I'm very proud of them because they live there and they pay taxes. They want the same protections as everybody else. I live in West Side, we have Engine 7. I'm blessed to have that a couple of blocks from my house. They should, as taxpayers, have that same, have the same. So that's enough on Engine 10. We'll keep our eye on it. You'll see it next week, so we'll have some better language there. And then secondly, Mr. Voldenberg, we talked about this earlier. You know, the property, 3103 McCarthy Avenue with the blight issues. Could you please get us an update? I know there were some multiple issues there. I don't know what has been remedied or not, but if you could please do a follow-up for us.
I will, sir.
And then I got another inquiry on, it's on Cabrini Avenue. So, and this is a little strange. So I guess, you know, one side of the street, you can't park. There's no parking signs, right? And they're there, and they're there from the block of 125 to 127, but there's no signs on the blocks below. So there's no signs on that same side of the street below. Cars are parking there and causing issues at the corner of Jackson and Cabrini, and this is on the 100th block. No, I'm sorry. So on the 100th block, half the block has signs and the other half doesn't. So I don't know if there were signs there originally or not, so could you please have the, you know, the property departments take a look at it, see what's up with that and get us an answer for that?
I will.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrick. I just have a couple. Last week, the request for the stop sign on Capous Avenue in Newark, or Capous Avenue in New York Street, Mr. Voldenberg has sent that to the administration, the city engineer, and also to the Scranton Police Department. The concern on Harrison Avenue Bridge about all the cracks, we found out from the state, the bridge people, that there are no issues with that. They are aware of them. They have been, we spoke to them, I guess, earlier this year during the summer. They came and looked at them and said they were normal stress cracks. They will be treating it and filling all the cracks. And he said, but even after they fill the cracks, you're going to be able to see the lines of the cracks, but they will be filled. And we had a request for information on the pods that are dropped off at your house for packaging and moving and stuff. So we were working on that, but it seemed to have gotten tabled a number of times. So we are back to working on that again, and hopefully, in the near future, we will complete that one. That is all I have, Mr. McCandrick.
Mr. Smurl, can I just say one more thing? No, you're right. So I, there was one further inquiry that I made two weeks ago, and Mr. McCandrick also brought it up last week. It was about the MOUs or MOAs with the Fire Department and DPW. So we asked if they had been signed and completed as it applies to residency, and the answer that was received this week was that we're still in discussion with DPW and fire bargaining units, and a response is forthcoming. So the residency MOUs or MOAs, as the administration had called them, that needed to be passed in August are still not settled. That's all.
Thank you.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant for up to $350,000 to be used towards the City of Scranton pre-design, design, and construction oversight for fire engine house number 10.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time. Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption filed a Council Number 39, 2024, ratifying and approving an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation and memorandum of understanding between City of Scranton's Department of Public Works and the Scranton School District regarding the borrowing of a refuse truck.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A. On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 129, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Social Contract LLC to perform services for the Community Violence Intervention and Prevention Program, Phases, Design Project, and Contract Management.
What is the recommendation of the Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend a final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 130, 2024, appointment of Megan Alpert as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority to fill the unexpired term of Mary Ann Sinclair, beginning immediately and expiring September 27th, 2026.
As Chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, just like to thank Ms. Sinclair for her service on this board. It's been many years, and we'll welcome Ms. Albert.
Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.